Good afternoon, and thank you all for recognizing that we're starting an hour early today, at noon instead of one, because we have, having been snowed out last month, we have much more lengthy agenda than as is normal. So, thank you for your accommodation. This is the April 2nd, 2015, meeting of the National Capital Planning Commission. I will note that for all in attendance today, that our meeting is being livestreamed on the NCPC website. We do have a quorum, and so we'll call the meeting to order officially, and we'll proceed with the agenda, as has been publicly noted. I will note that on the agenda toward the end, we'll probably switch 5C and 5B and take item 5C first, which is the Soldier's Home before 5B, because one leads into the other. So, that's the only change. Agenda item number one is a report of the chairman, and I'd like to note today the presence of Sean Casey, representing Senate Chairman Ron Johnson. Thank you for coming. And that kind of wraps, well, we have elections to do. For those watching, April typically is the month when we appoint the three-member Executive Committee. And our bylaws state that it's a balance between the, a semi-balance, between the federal representatives and the district representatives. For many years, Mr. Miller had served as vice chair and as the third member of the Executive Committee, along with Mr. May from the National Park Service and me. And so, we have, with Mr. Miller's retirement from here, we have one vacancy that we need to reorganize. So, is there a motion for, is there a nomination for a DC representative to serve on the Executive Committee and as vice chair?
I would to appoint or vote for Arrington Dixon as vice chair.
There's been a motion for Mr. Dixon. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, sensing no further nominations. All in favor of Mr. Dixon as being the third member of the Executive Committee, along with Mr. May and me, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you very much. And there are no abstentions. Of course, Mr. Dixon's not here, so he wasn't here to object.
That'll teach him.
Thank you for that very much. Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I have a few announcements to make. I'm very pleased to announce that Lucy Kemp has been selected as a permanent Director of Urban Design and Plan Review. Lucy joined NCPC in 2006 and has served as project officer for the Height of Buildings Master Plan, Comprehensive Plan Urban Design and Open Space Elements, and NCPC Commemorative Work Policy. Prior to joining NCPC, Lucy worked for the Downtown DC Business Improvement District and holds a Masters in Urban Planning from the University of Virginia.
Congratulations, Lucy.
Also, I'd like to thank our colleague David Levy for returning to NCPC and stepping into the interim Plan Review Director's role on such short notice. David will continue to work for the agency through the end of June as my special advisor, and will help Lucy with the transition. So, thank you, David. And finally, I'd like to note the recent passing of our colleague, longtime Chief Urban Designer Christine Saum. After retiring from the commission last year, Christine passed away in February after a long battle with cancer. Christine was a trusted advisor, a highly regarded peer, and a wonderful mentor to our junior staff. So, we send our condolences to Christine's family and friends. So, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Costa, very much, and we do miss Christine. She was a wonderful colleague. And indeed, David Levy, thank you for your service to us, and we look forward to working with Lucy in the day ahead. Any questions for Mr. Costa on this report? Agenda item number three is a legislative update, and General Counsel, Ms. Schuyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items that I'd like to report. The first, there have been two bills introduced into the House of Representatives that have relationship to the work of this commission. The first is HR 477, which extends the authorization for the Brigadier General Francis Marion Memorial until May 18th, 2018. The second is HR 1475. This authorizes the addition of a wall of remembrance as part of the Korean War Veterans Memorial, that will include a list of all members of the US Armed Forces who were killed in action in Korea, the number of members who were wounded listed as missing in action or prisoners of war, and the number of members of the Korean Augmentation Forces that served with the US forces. This bill's been introduced several successive sessions, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Schuyler? Thank you. Agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and this month, we only have one item, and that is the final master plan for the Naval Research Laboratory Naval Support Facility. Is there any questions, are there any questions on that? Hearing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes, thank you. Moving right into the action items. Agenda item number five, A, is the final master plan for the National Institutes of Health in Bethesda, and we have Mr. Wile. Welcome.
This is a final master plan review for the National Institutes of Health main campus in Bethesda, Maryland. The master plan is being submitted by the United States Department of Health and Human So, the NIH campus is located in southern Montgomery County, just inside the Beltway, approximately two to three miles north of the district Maryland State Line. As you can see from this local area context slide, the 310-acre campus is located just to the west, across the street from the Naval Surface Activity Bethesda Installation, and the commission recently reviewed that final master plan about a year ago. It's located to the east, across Old Georgetown Road from Suburban Hospital, and along the north side of the Bethesda Central Business District. Moving in closer, you can see that the campus is bounded on the east side by Rockville Pike, on the west side, Old Georgetown Road, and along the north side by West Cedar Lane. Now, Rockville Pike and Old Georgetown Road serve as major arterial roadways, and they carry a lot of traffic traveling between the Beltway and locations to the north and destinations to the south within the Bethesda Central Business District and District of Columbia. West Cedar Lane is a smaller collector road, that's two lanes wide, and the southern portion of the campus is simply a perimeter fence, which backs up to existing residential neighborhoods. I'd like to point out that the Medical Center Metro Rail Station is located adjacent to the campus. So, here's a little timeline. Basically, just to give you a little history, in 1991, Bethesda was a lot, a lot smaller of a place in this part of the county. At the time, NIH was proposing to construct a new parking garage on its campus. NIH was approximately 14,000 to 15,000 people at the time, and it contributed a fairly significant amount of traffic to Rockville Pike and Old Georgetown Road. At the time, the 1989 NCPC Comprehensive Plan was in effect, and so, in response to community concern, NIH signed a trilateral agreement, a memorandum of understanding with NCPC and the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, to bring the campus into compliance with the 1989 parking ratio goal at that time, which was a 1 to So, after that, NCPC adopted a new comprehensive plan in 2004, and the significant part of this was this enacted a change from the 1 to 2 ratio goal to a 1 to 3 ratio goal. So, with the adoption of this comprehensive plan, the 1 to 3 goal superseded the predecessor 1 to 2 goal. Here's a slide that shows the change between the early 1990s, when the MOU was originally signed, and the early 2000s, when the Comprehensive Plan was redrafted. As you can see, it's a very growing area, it was back then, and it continues to be. I included these two graphics showing the incomplete metro rail system at the time, with large portions of the green line still missing, and the almost fully complete metro rail system in 2004. I'd like to note that the NIH campus is located, again, along the Medical Center Metro Rail Station, and that's located along the oldest, one of the oldest lines in the metro rail system. The Medical Center Station was operational in 1984. So, this parking ratio goal was made more stringent in an effort with the Comprehensive Plan to better support regional sustainability and smart, smart growth goals throughout the region. You can see the various levels of parking ratio goals. The most stringent goals are in the central employment area of the District of Columbia, a 1 to 5. The parking ratio becomes more lenient, basically, the further out from the center city you go. Within the historic boundaries of the District of Columbia, for federal installations, the parking ratio becomes a 1 to 4. For installations located along metro rail stations outside of the District of Columbia, it's a 1 to 3 parking ratio. And for all other installations within the region further out, further away from 2,000 square feet, or, excuse me, 2,000 feet from a metro rail station, that parking ratio drops to a 1, 1.5 to 2. So, in December 2005, NCPC reviewed the predecessor master plan to the one you're reviewing today. At that time, the commission approved the master plan, but requested revision of the plans of parking ratio to a 1 to 3. In its review of the draft master plan, NIH and NCPC referred the draft out to the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, who transmitted, which transmitted a number of comments for staff consideration in its review, one of which expressed support for the long-term 1 to 3 parking ratio goal. And in November 2012, the commission reviewed, finally reviewed the draft 2013 master plan. At that time, the commission recommended that NIH amend its master plan to adhere to the applicable 2004 1 to 3 parking ratio goal, and to, and expressed that one of the strategies that NIH should use to attain that goal within the 20-year lifespan of the master plan, that it should actually actively remove parking, so that it was guaranteed to meet that goal in 20 years. More recently, last month, there was a letter drafted, signed by Christopher Van Hollen's office, one Maryland State Senator, three Maryland State delegates, and a Montgomery County Councilman. And this letter expressed support for the NCPC 1 to 3 parking ratio goal for the NIH campus. And I believe you've all received a copy of that letter. It's contained in Appendix C of the EDR. And just to, just to give you a preview, based on the past planning history with NIH and its parking ratio, staff is going to recommend approval of the master plan, with the exception of any increase in the parking supply for the following reasons. The current employee parking exceeds the applicable 1 to 3 parking ratio goal. NIH has had the opportunity now, for over 10 years, to start planning to meet this ratio, and NIH was not successful in demonstrating that the campus is unable to comply with the 1 to 3 long-term goal. And in follow-up, staff will be requesting, and again, you'll see the exact language in the final slides of my presentation, that NIH revised its master plan and TMP to comply with the 1 to 3 goal, to include more detailed travel demand management strategies, quantifiable mode share goals, and more detailed employee demographic information, and to report back to the commission within six months on the status of that effort. Again, it is important to keep in mind, as I go through my presentation, that the Comprehensive Plan is about growing the region in a more sustainable way, rather than just focusing on minimizing traffic congestion. While that is a good start, and that is important, the Comprehensive Plan is designed really to address broader regional sustainability and smart growth policies. So, in terms of the final master plan, NIH started with, with a number of positive master plan goals, including fostering innovative research, supporting evolving biomedical research requirements, providing a secure supportive environment, respecting the stability and integrity of the surrounding residential community, protecting the environment of the campus and its impact on the region, and meeting the federal real property council's performance measures. Based on these goals, NIH selected six planning principles, and I'd like to highlight three of them briefly. Number one, the NIH master plan, you'll see this, seeks to shift future development closer to the Medical Center Metro Rail Station, to try to foster a more, greater transit, biking and walking throughout campus, and also make it more convenient for NIH employees to travel to the Bethesda campus. NIH seeks to develop a number of clusters with its future development to increase internal collaboration and to facilitate its research mission. And also, the master plan will show that it is removing impervious surface and enhancing its 250-foot-wide existing perimeter buffer. So, NIH developed a series of three potential future growth scenarios. You can see, alternative one is a minimum growth scenario, with only two projects that are currently funded. Alternative three is a maximum growth scenario, that will accommodate relocating all of NIH's 10,000 off-campus employees back onto campus. And ultimately, NIH selected the medium growth scenario, in which future development will be able to accommodate a relocation of 3,000 of its off-campus employees back onto the campus. So, the master plan has several assumptions. It's based on a maximum potential employee increase of 3,000 over 20 years. It assumes a maximum parking increase of 1,000 spaces, and it assumes that the 24-year-old TMP and 23-year-old MOU will still be in effect for the next 20 years. Here's a summary slide that shows the master plan will add 1.6 million square feet of new space. There are a lot of positive things reflected here. The master plan will reduce the amount of impervious surface on the campus. It'll increase the amount of open space by approximately nine acres, or 3% of the total land area. And it'll reduce the amount of parking area, land dedicated to parking, by approximately 12 acres, or 4% of the area. The master plan will result in a slight improvement in the overall campus parking ratio, from a 1 to 2.3 to a 1 to 2.4 in 20 years. So, here's a future development graphic compared to an existing development graphic, and again, this shows the existing development, future development broken down into various land uses, and I'll go, I'll briefly go through some of the, some of the planned projects. So, the master plan envisions removing surface parking in the very southern part of the campus. I believe there's approximately 1,100 to 1,200 surface spaces here, and developing that space with a new support cluster, with buildings dedicated to ground maintenance and waste handling. The master plan includes plans for three new parking garages, a new 775,000-square-foot biomedical laboratory building, a new addition to the Natcher Building. This building is used for educational purposes and on-campus conferences, a new police station, a new 600,000-square-foot administrative office building that could be as high as 17 stories, close, close to the metro rail station, again, to encourage greater transit ridership, a new child development center, and a new access point off of West Cedar Lane. So, there are a number of internal roadway improvements to improve the connectivity within the campus, especially from the east side to the west side. The master plan seeks to create more of a grid-like internal circulation system, which is more efficient for, for walking and biking and transit, as opposed to driving around the Ring Road. The master plan shows a number of new bicycle locker locations on campus. As you can see with all the green dots, there are already a lot of bicycle parking locations. And also, the master plan currently assumes that NIH's robust shuttle system will continue for the next 20 years, and the master plan shows a number of additional transit stops within the campus. The master plan is divided into four phases of growth. Each phase is five years. However, NIH believes that its development will be accomplished within the first three phases of the master plan, which encompasses 15 years. Any of these projects which are not completed or are not started to be constructed within the first 15 years will be shifted to the fourth phase, which includes years 16 through 20. And I'd just like to highlight that NIH is already including a new, one of its new three parking garages in the first phase of development. Here's a concept diagram that shows future campus development on NIH being organized into five different research clusters, two support clusters, one administrative cluster, and one biomedical research educational cluster. One of the things to note about this graphic is, the master plan does show this important view shed between historic building one on campus and in a historic, in the historic building one on the NSAB campus, and this shows that, that view shed must be protected in the future and preserved. Master plan has a landscape concept component that shows enhancement of the existing 250-foot-wide campus buffer, improvement of several internal landscapes, and really, the master plan seeks to foster a more complete system of on-campus open space. This graphic shows that a majority of the future development on campus will be located within a 10-minute walk of the Medical Center Metro Rail Station. And again, this is a part of NIH's effort to promote walking, biking, and transit use in the future. The master plan also includes a design guideline section. These design guidelines are fairly detailed, and they address a number of various issues, such as campus lighting, street cross-sections, street treat guidelines, bollards, and pavement markings. So, in terms of the staff analysis, there's actually a lot to be happy about with this master plan. It does a lot of positive things, such as reducing impervious surface area, increasing open space, reusing historic buildings, enhancing the perimeter buffer, and shifting future development closer to the transportation center area. However, staff identified four categories of improvement with the master plan, and staff will be recommending, through its EDR, through its Executive Director's recommendation today, additional advice that the commission should provide to NIH in order to improve its master plan. So, starting with the proposed increase in employee parking, this shows a number of documents that NIH supplied to NCPC staff in consideration of its proposal to maintain its 1 to 2 parking ratio goal for the campus. Three of these, three of these documents shown before you, that are shaded and yellow, were provided, and, and, and these provide a lot of, a lot of points and additional demographic and forecast information, in order to justify their preservation of the 1 to 2 long-term parking ratio goal. I'd like to point out, the last document is the commission meeting statement, and I believe all of you, that was submitted by NIH in the last few days, and I believe each one of you has had the opportunity to review a copy of that. This is an overview slide that provides some general themes to summarize all of the points made by NIH in their master plan submission. Some of their points include warranting special consideration due to the campus's location as a near-end-of-the-line station, employee demographics, which includes specialized workers, many of whom work in shifts and commute from further out locations within the region, and an NIH analysis that shows that 50% of their workers will still have to rely on driving alone to work 20 years from now. As you can see by the left-side graphic, which shows the metro rail system, the Medical Center Station is located approximately halfway between downtown Washington and the end-of-the-line Shady Grove Station. However, it is important to keep in mind that this location is not located near the end of the red line. Rather, the station is situated adjacent to the Bethesda Central Business District, with approximately 32,000 people, in an area of the county that continues to densify. The right side of the graphic was provided by NIH to show how spread out today's NIH employees live throughout the region, in order to demonstrate why a majority of their employees must drive alone to work every day. And it is interesting to note the concentration of NIH employees who currently live along the Route 355 metro rail red line, close to the campus. But staff would like to point out a number of recently approved federal master plans that the commission has reviewed within the last year, which all have committed to attain their respective Comprehensive Plan parking ratio goals. And staff notes that some of these goals are more stringent than the 1 to 3 ratio that NIH is being asked to comply with. In particular, I would like to highlight NSA Bethesda, with its location right across the street from the NIH campus, and not only do they currently adhere to the 1 to 3 parking ratio, but they have committed to maintaining the ratio throughout the 20-year timeframe of the recently adopted master plan. And though there are some differences between NIH and NSAB, there are several key similarities between the two, including a hospital, specialized medical personnel, and both NIH and NSA Bethesda are 24-hour facilities. NIH submitted an analysis that shows that roughly 60% of its employees currently must drive or are likely to drive alone to work, and that approximately 50% of its employees will likely, or will drive alone to work in the future. And the submission materials state that their future forecast does account for planned future transit projects, such as the Purple Line and the Corridor Cities Transit Way. However, NCPC staff believes that due to projections by the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, as shown in the right-hand graphic, and other changing demographics within the region, that the time is ripe for NIH to adopt a more stringent 1 to 3 parking ratio goal. The WashCO graphic on the right shows its forecast of where people are likely to live in 2030, shown by the red dots. And as you can see, the region's population is projected to concentrate within the District of Columbia, within the region's more densely developed areas outside of the district, and along existing and future transit corridors. In addition, Montgomery County and the state have plans to develop several nearby transit projects, and there are plans for several relatively large-scale metro station area developments that will densify areas immediately to the north of the NIH campus, with millions of square feet of new commercial and residential space. These future projects, in addition to a gradual turnover of the NIH workforce, as workers from the baby boomer generation are replaced with younger workers from the millennial generation, will likely lead to different preferences in where future NIH employees will live and how they will travel to work. This isn't just speculation by NCPC staff, but rather, based on official population forecasts, local and regional planning policies, and planned future transit and development projects within the region. Keep in mind that the 1 to 3 long-term parking ratio goal for NIH is reflective of the larger Comprehensive Plans policies that are designed to do more than just minimize traffic congestion, but to support broader regional sustainability and smart growth policies and goals. It is important to remember that this is a long-term goal that supersedes the outdated 1 to 2 goal spelled out under the 1992 memorandum of understanding. And while NIH has been successful in minimizing its peak-hour traffic impact along Rockville Pike and Old Georgetown Road, the time is ripe for planning to reduce future on-campus employee parking during the next 20 years. And let me just leave you with two of the three Comprehensive Plan's overarching principles, which clearly support the plan's intent to support a sustainable and smartly planned Washington metropolitan region. So, staff will be recommending that the commission approve the NIH master So staff will be recommending that the commission approve the NIH master plan, with the exception of the proposed additional employee parking, and to modify the 2013 master plan and TMP to reflect the one-to-three long-term goal, and to report back to the commission the status of their work within six months at the end of their presentation. In support of this recommendation, staff notes that there are a number of parking garage projects and roadway improvements that could undercut NIH's effort to comply with the more stringent parking ratio goal. And so staff will recommend to the commission that they note that NCPC is unlikely to approve any of these future projects until the master plan fully complies with the comprehensive plan and its federal sustainability policies for the region. These are the last two categories that I will cover, and these will be much shorter than the first two. Staff had comments related to the proposed N-21, 600,000-square-foot new administrative office tower along the east side of campus in close proximity to Rockville-Pike and the NSA Bethesda campus. Due to its site and its location and its proposed potential height, this does have the impact, this does have the possibility of impacting this historic view shed between these two historic buildings across the road from each other. And so staff will be recommending that the commission relate to the NIH that, as it's developing this project, it should engage in a fairly extensive and comprehensive community outreach effort to ensure that any sort of impacts, including visual, are minimized from the project. In terms of the NIH, excuse me, the NIH master plan, it does allow the use of bollards for security, physical perimeter building security purposes on campus. Staff will be also recommending that the commission remind NIH that it tends to discourage the use of bollards for physical perimeter security within secure federal campuses such as NIH. So with that is the Executive Director's recommendation of the commission to approve the final master plan, with the exception of any increase in the parking supply for the following reasons. Current employee parking exceeds the applicable one-to-three parking ratio goal by approximately 2,100 spaces, and the master plan will increase employee parking by 1,000 more spaces, resulting in a long-term parking ratio of a 1 to 2.4, which is inconsistent with the 2004 comprehensive plan. NIH has now had the opportunity to plan for the one-to-three ratio since NCPC's adoption of the current 2004 comprehensive plan, and NIH has not successfully demonstrated that the campus is not able to comply with the one-to-three long-term goal based on the submitted transportation management plan materials. The commission should note that the commission is unlikely to approve any future roadway entrance or parking projects until the NIH campus fully complies with the 2004 comprehensive plan, since its policies are designed to guide federal development in support of regional sustainability goals related to air and water quality, transportation infrastructure demand, and efficient use of land resources. The Executive Director recommends that the commission note that based on the planned height and location of the building, N-21 project, that NIH should conduct an early and extensive community outreach effort, including consultation with NCPC, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, Maryland Historic Trust, and the Navy, to ensure that any off-campus impacts are minimized. To note that the commission discourages the use of bollards for security purposes on secure federal campuses, and to request that NIH revise its master plan and TMP to comply with the applicable one-to-three comprehensive plan parking ratio goal, and to include more detailed travel demand management information and employee demographic information, and to report back to the commission within six months on this effort. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wild, very much. Very comprehensive. Unless there are any burning questions from Mr. Wild, what I would recommend is that we go to Mr. Herring.
Well, I'm just going to ask any question that you have. I'm not up just yet.
Okay. Do you have any statement or anything you'd like to make?
I do, but I'd rather go last.
I'm sorry?
I'd rather go last.
You'd rather go last? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I want to commend Mr. Wild for such a great presentation.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I understand you all have had a lot of meetings, and so, very good. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. So are there any questions among, so I guess we will go to any questions from Mr. Wild, then have a discussion, and then, Mr. Herring, if you want to wrap up? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, you know, I can answer the questions in the master plan probably better than anybody, so.
Okay. Well, let's see how it goes.
Okay.
Okay, terrific. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
I think the big issue is the transportation master plan, and we may want to key on that a little bit. The NIH campus has the added benefit of having a metro stop right on campus. I think that's important to note. Questions or comments? Mr. May?
You just said it. They have a metro stop right on the campus.
Your microphone.
And it's very well-used.
Right. But it's hard to understand why 1.3 ratio can't be met when you have a metro station on the campus, and every building seems to be within a 10-minute walk of that station. So it's just a very hard thing to understand.
If I may, if I may say this. NIH has population, people in 635 zip codes. That is the entire region, all the way to the Pennsylvania line to West Virginia. In fact, we've got people coming in from Pennsylvania. We have 192 coming in from Pennsylvania every day. So we have this wide dispersment of population, but we're also heavily concentrated around transit. We have, for example, there are 10,000 people in Montgomery County. That's almost half the population of NIH. Along the red line, the north part of the red line, we have over 4,000 people that is in those zip codes. That's almost 20%. But we have, we have 20,000 people. This is a civilian employ operation. That's very large. It's probably the largest civilian employ operation in the country. And people come from everywhere. People are moving out of Bethesda, we know that, into West Virginia because they run a farm and things like that. So we have, we have a concentration of that, and we are using it. It's just that 52% of the people are not available for transit. And based on your population...
What do you mean, "not available"?
What I mean is, there's no metro, there's no trains, they're not. They have to drive.
They live in places where they cannot easily get...
That's exactly right.
Okay. And so can those people drive to metro parking lots? Can they drive to train stations?
Sometimes they can, but a lot of times they cannot.
And so are there reasons why they can't be there because of hours of the day? To what extent are these people, you know, working the midnight shift and can't commute with, you know, when the metro is open?
We have, basically, we have a, we've got about 71% of our people that are in research. They work at different hours. 71%. Most of all our, we're not like a typical government agency. We only have 20% of our people...
I don't know that any government agency is really that typical, but I think the point is that it's availability of transit. If you have a lot of people who are coming and going in hours when transit is not available, that's an understandable reason why you might need more parking. But what you're explaining are issues that are common to every federal agency.
Yes.
And this is why we have targets.
Okay. Let me explain to you again. There are certain areas, most of the areas we looked at, do not have any close transit near them. We looked at the buses, we looked at the roads and everything. They are not there. They're going to drive. Then there is another 6%...
Well, they, I mean, they may need to drive for some portion of their transit to work, but I would also say that if they didn't have parking available at work, that they would have greater incentive to either locate close to such transit nodes or to drive to those locations. Again, you're talking about things that are common to every federal agency, and I don't see anything in here that's a compelling reason why your agency should be treated any differently from the one across the street.
I disagree. And the one across the street is a lot different.
It's apparent.
No. Basically, we cannot, I'm just trying to tell you, I mean, it's just not possible. That's all I'm saying.
So there are a lot of really, really, really smart people at NIH.
That's correct.
And you can't figure out how to get from 1.2 to 1.3?
No. We can't. Because the demographics show that we can't. We just, I mean, parking to us is a, what I would call, a mission-dependent facility. People need to get there. And this has always been a problem in NIH. We've saturated the entire, saturated the entire area. I mean, the transit system, we're exactly at every metro station. Then you've got the problem of those metro stations that are on the other side of town, that you have to go downtown and come back up, like in Silver Spring and in northern Prince George's County. They're going to go around the Beltway. They're not going to take metro. It's a lot easier, and it's convenient. And it's convenient if not going, driving down to get a parking space. We're talking 3,000 people trying to do that, and that's not possible.
Ms. White.
From everything that I've read and the two written statements that were left here for us, and with all due respect, what you just said, that it was impossible, gives me a little pause. It seems like everything is based on convenience and preference as to what the scientists want to do, and I think the exception with NIH is your mission statement. And, you know, I think that the NIH should lead by example in trying to change behavior that we all know is toward the, let me, let me finish. Toward the public good. The other thing that strikes me is that you have a transportation plan that is over 20 years old. So my humble opinion is, rather than us debating here, I would love to see a further exploration of the transportation master plan in looking at not what current demographics are or current preferences, or telling us that something is impossible. I'd really like to see a thoughtful transportation plan that begins to change behavior. So I think that, to me, would be a more fruitful conversation. But for now, I support the staff's recommendation.
Let me say this. We were probably the first ones to do a transportation management plan.
Probably.
And we don't have the authority, at least I don't, the authority to change it. This was a trilateral memorandum of agreement between three agencies, and the heads of those three agencies signed off on it. The issue here is that we went through a lot of changes to try to even get to the one-to-two. We went through a lot of agony to do that. I can tell you, based on where we are and based on the way people's behavior, they are going to need to drive. There's going to be, there's going to be chaos if we start taking away parking spaces. Now, I guarantee you that if these projections are true that's coming up, well, we're going to be submitting the master plan again in five years. We'll take a look at it, and that they have. But right now, we have to deal with the facts. We deal in facts. This master plan is based on facts, it's based on established trends, and it's based on reality. We try to keep out of the speculation and all of that, because basically, we have some guiding principles called the Federal Real Property Council Performance Measures that allow us to try to get funding for projects that are really needed. And parking to us, at the National Institutes of Health, is a, is what we call a mission-dependent facility. Okay?
So, Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment and then a question for Ann Schuyler. Because I still, just on a philosophical level, question, what does it say when we're encouraging our nation's top scientists to drive? And the plan that I see before us encourages more driving, not discourage, but in any event, Ann, what is the answer on the validity of the memorandum of agreement and whether or not that could be changed or the transportation master plan updated? I'm confused by that.
The 1992 MOU refers to a TMP that was in existence, in existent at the time. The purpose of the MOU was to obtain a commitment from NIH to comply with, among others, comprehensive plan parking policies in existent at the time of the MOU's execution, which is the one-to-two ratio. There is nothing in the MOU that indicates the one-to-two ratio was intended to be the ultimate parking ratio to be applied to the NIH campus in perpetuity. In fact, when the comprehensive plan policy for parking was changed to a one-to-three ratio in 2004, the commission immediately requested NIH compliance with this new requirement the following year, when it reviewed an NIH master plan update. The requirement of compliance with the new standard, I think, is further evidence of the commission's intent that the one-to-two ratio was not intended to be a permanent requirement. In fact, this commission, and your predecessors who've served on it, have continued to advocate compliance with the one-to-three ratio since 2005, notwithstanding NIH's resistance.
Mr. Chairman.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you have further follow-up?
No, no, I just wanted that clarity.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very much aware of this issue at NIH, and I'm sympathetic to your request, but I do believe that it would be good to go back. And let me tell you what I know. I'm sorry to say I'm not there now, but I've been doing, I have had contract work at NIH for over 10 years, and over 100 people, and parking is an issue with them. And we have, I'm not there now, I regret to say, but maybe we'll change that. Parking may become an issue, and I have a dog in the hunt, but I'm an on-the-ground, knowledgeable person about this, over 100 people who are my people, who were my people there. And we made an effort within my company, the private sector, to offer fare cards and other access to metro to encourage less parking requirements, because my company had to pay for the parking, and parking spaces had to. So therefore, I see this as a very personal level and a very business level, and we ended up encouraging our folk, and surprisingly enough, we were able to get them to be interested in our supporting fare card through the metro fare card system for businesses. So I think it would be useful, and I'm not, I'm sympathetic, I said that, because I had to fight this at a, at a, at a, on the, on the ground level. And we are, my people, the people I had were essential employees, snow, rain, or snow, we were on duty and had to be there 24/7. So it became very critical with metro. So we know, understand metro doesn't travel at all times, we had to accommodate that. Point I'm making only is, from my perspective inside, having been inside, that it would be useful, I think, for us to try to get you guys to look at this again. We had to look at it again as a contractor there, and we did, so.
We have looked at it.
Yeah, I know you have, but I think you're sensing from this body that we would like to make another bite.
The thing, I don't think, the thing is, the reality is, we don't have enough parking now. I mean, this is a fact. We don't have enough parking now for what we're doing. And so, and we don't see, right now, we do not see any change in that right now, because everybody is coming from all over the place, and we have saturated metro. We have probably the highest number of people using fare cards in this region. We probably, we are one of the first to do that. We're the ones that tried to get, helped get the legislation passed to do that. We have been very committed to reducing traffic, and we continue to reduce congestion now. We started off in '92, we have reduced our congestion in the AM peak hours by 55%. We have reduced our congestion in the PM peak hours to 65%.
Yeah, I would always suggest, I may suggest that you might look at the contracting people there and see if they can be encouraged. We have, we've included, at least we did for 10, 10 years, we got people that are share-riding, all kinds of things came out of pressure on us, so I'm just saying, there may be ways to look at it.
Generally speaking, contractors we're talking about in the, in the master plan are contractors that are, personal service contractors that are actually doing research and actually working with the staff. Now, other contractors, yeah, they, they don't get parking spaces. They don't get parking spaces there if you're like a, you know, general contractor or service contractor. You do not get parking spaces there.
We're involved in the reset.
Okay. Well, some people do that. I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, that's something that, that's a procurement issue. That is not an issue that the planning folks can address. And there are certain things that we can do and certain things we cannot do. But I can tell you right now, whether you, I know you feel that we can't, we can do this, but when you start talking about people coming up from near the Pennsylvania line in every, you know, like, we've got 1 to 10 people living in 480 zip codes. So you've got very small groups of people. When you add them all up, along with the ones that are in Montgomery County, which is the biggest one, but do not have access to public transportation, such as over there in Potomac, near Coosville and places like that, that comes up to 51% of the population. We don't see anywhere around that. And one of your, one of your policies, one of your policies is provide parking for people who must drive, who need to drive. We looked at this thing. Now, I don't know what the 1 to 2.4 is. All I'm saying is, if we go into, if the purple line and the red line, I mean, the purple line and the CCT... purple line and the CCT is built, we can reduce our parking ratio down to 0.48, 0.48. Because then you've got a lot more people that have more access and more convenient access to mass transit. But then there's those outlining folks that are outside of the area. I mean, it's amazing the number of people we got out there. Except that Montgomery County is where people are concentrated, concentrated, followed by the District of Columbia, followed by Virginia, the entire state of Virginia, the rest of Maryland, Prince George's County, West Virginia, and Pennsylvania. I mean, I don't know what more we can do. It's just not possible right now. Now, if these projections show up in five years and we can see that, we'll look at it. But the other thing you need to understand, which is very important, is that NIH not only is committed to reducing traffic, but they, they put their money where their mouth is. They put in $668 million since 2004 to help reduce traffic. And that's based on that, that's based on that agreement that you guys want to get rid of. And we're doing $7 million a year. And then, in the recent years, we've been put under pressure is, why are we spending this money? Because we are having budget cuts. Now, we are committed to doing this, but we need that agreement. Because we're not going to be able to defend the things we need to do. And it costs money. It costs money to make this happen.
Mr. Herring, thank you. Mr. Griffiths?
I just have one comment, and I just wanted to touch on the fact that you have spent $168 million from our, our report since 2003, and you continue to spend over $7 million a year to implement your TMP. And in one of the comments from the commission, that pushing NIH to be a leader, I'm wondering, in addition to those kind of funds, you're also spending over $13 million a year for off-site parking for 3,000 spaces. Well, it's according to what we have, not equivalent to that.
Now, that's if we were to do that. In other words, if we were to go to one to three.
Right. Well, let me just, I'll finish, round it off, and then you can get to it. Because what I'm interested in, and it's probably more of a comment than a question that you can get to, is with that kind of money, has there ever been any sort of discussions on incentivizing places of residential location? Because the formula to solve for people that must drive and the parking, the ratio won't get there. I understand that's your position, but can you, can you carve it a different way?
We can't do that. We don't have the, we don't have the legislative authority to do something like that. Now, the $13 million thing was based on the fact that NIH has a policy of free parking for every employee and every, every contractor.
Right.
That we have.
So I, I understand that number.
If we were to go into satellite parking.
Right.
That's where that 13, $13 million could come in, and we can't afford that.
I was just going more towards if you had that as a possibility that would have to be spent, could it be spent in a different way that more permanently solved a solution than had a continuing?
We're not going to get that kind of money. Not for transportation. No. Not when the budgets are being cut.
Okay, thank you.
We're lucky to keep going where we are now.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. We have another speaker. But before you sit down, let me ask you one question. The March 12 letter from Congressman Van Hollen and others, have you provided an answer to them?
As far as I know, is, the answer is being circulated through upper command.
Okay.
We've already did our part, but it's out of our hands.
Okay.
Now, do I get a chance to come back? This was not my testimony.
We'll see how the discussion goes.
This is not my testimony. This was just answering your questions.
This is not your testimony, huh?
That's right. That's not my testimony.
Well, we'll see how it goes. I think we have with us Mr. Drew Morrison, representing Montgomery County. Welcome. You have five minutes, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you. My name is Drew Morrison. I'm the Transportation and Environment Policy Person for Councilmember Roger Berliner. As you know, elected officials at all levels of government, Congressman Chris Van Hollen, Maryland State Senator Susan Lee, state delegates Bill Frick, Arianna Kelly, and Mark Corman, along with Councilmember Berliner, all have written to NIH and HHS asking that the master plan be revised to reduce, not increase, the amount of parking on campus. You've heard a little bit about this issue from staff. And so I want to say first, we want to express our sincere admiration for the work that NIH does in our community. It's obviously a major employer. It's a leading research institution, both in our county and in the whole country, and its employees literally change the world every day. But one of the biggest issues that I don't think has been addressed yet is the economic development issue that the traffic from NIH causes for the Bethesda community. Obviously, NIH is an important part of the economy in Bethesda, but many property owners in downtown Bethesda are telling us right now that they can't attract new businesses to Bethesda precisely because of this traffic problem. And so we believe that the selected alternative, which will add 1,000 parking spaces to the most congested intersections in Montgomery County, poses a significant challenge, both to this overtax transportation system, it's not responsive enough to the concerns of Bethesda's residents, and it's not in keeping with what we see at the neighboring federal institution. And as you saw, as part of the public comment process, both this body, the Montgomery County Planning Board, the county executive staff, and the adjacent neighborhoods, all requested NIH to adopt this one to three parking ratio across the board. As we saw with the BRAC process, NSAB has successfully adopted this model, and NIH can learn from their success. And as we like to say, if NIH were to adopt such a policy, instead of adding 1,000 parking spaces to congested Maryland 355, it'd actually be in a position to remove 2,300 spaces, a net benefit of 3,300 spaces. Removing 3,300 cars from our clogged roads would be a good neighbor policy when we urge NIH to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrison. Any questions to this point? Thank you very much. Mr. Herring, let me give you five more minutes. We've been at this for a half hour, 40 minutes, and you've had a good chunk. And we, I will note that we, we do have your four-page, March 13 letter.
And I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things I need to talk to you about. The gentleman is very right about economic development. Here's the deal. Bethesda, Central Business District, has currently 35,000 jobs. The Central Business District is projecting another, over another 5,000 jobs in the next to 20, to 2030. That's where the congestion is. It's down in that development because all, all the traffic goes right past the Navy, and all the traffic goes right past NIH, down there where they are building and where they are developing. So, yeah, they would like to get 3,000 cars off the road. They don't have to worry about that capacity. They don't have to deal with the infrastructure. But that's, that's where the congestion is. It's not us. Secondly, with respect to the Navy, the Navy has 11,000 people currently, right now. 45% of that is military. And the question I have is, they have, they don't have a choice. They have to be at work, whether they have a car or not. We don't know how many are listed, people or nothing like that. Their civilian population, if they have a civilian population, it's about 40%. They are spread over 257 zip codes. They're half our size, and they have 1/3 of this threshold that we have. Sure, they can do it. There's no question about it. And we applaud them for doing it. They can do that. We can't. So that's basically the difference. But I do urge you to go ahead and approve the master plan. We'll come back and look at it in five years and see where we are. But now, as, if the facts are the way, I cannot responsibly recommend to management that we reduce our parking ratio. Because I am looking at the numbers. I'm looking at it very carefully. We have looked at any kind, every kind of way we can dice it. We can't do no better than that right now. Once the purple line is in, once the CCT is, we are already committed to say this. The commitment we have made is that we will, we will continue with the two to one for the current population of 20,000, 594. We will continue with that. For the 3,000 people, we will go to the one, one to three. And we'll continue to do that. If it's more than, more than 3,000, we'll still go to the one to three. That's what we're willing to do. And we think that's reasonable. We don't understand why nobody else thinks that's reasonable. We have to look at what we have to face today. And for us, we're concerned that we go out and take out 3,000 parking spaces? Heck, people will leave. They're not going to stay. They can't. And we can't tell them where to live, and we cannot dictate to them to take metro. Can't do that. But we have to treat all our employees equally. So if you work at NIH, you get a free parking space. So, I, hopefully, that you will understand where we're coming from. We just can't do it. There's no way. And we have done a lot to reduce congestion. We feel that congestion is the issue. Parking is not the issue. It is congestion. And we're doing everything we can to reduce congestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herring. Very much appreciate your being here.
I got a video you'd like to see. Oh, it's beautiful.
It's okay. We spent a good time discussing this. Public comment and applicant testimony is now over, and we will return the discussion, if there is further discussion, to the commission. Any comments before we entertain a motion? Mr. May?
Okay, so it seems apparent to me that the policy that SCPC has adopted and has been trying to communicate to NIH for 10 years has not gotten through at high enough levels of the management of NIH. So I'm wondering whether our voting to approve any portion of this master plan is actually an effective strategy to send that message, or whether the whole thing should be rejected. It's clear the message has not gotten through. You know, I understand that perspective. I have to deal with that myself within our own agency, but we have to break people of this perspective. And I, I, I'm searching around for the best way to do that because this message needs to be sent and it needs to be understood. There are ways to achieve one to three at NIH. There's no doubt about it. Other agencies do it. So I, I ask that question of others on the commission or others on staff, if you think that, you know, what's the best way to get this message sent?
I have a question. And about the parking, and then I want to switch over to another subject, if I may. Have you, you just said, everybody at NIH gets a free parking space. They don't have to pay for it even.
That is correct.
So, wow. That, that's quite a perk. I pay for mine, and, and the reason I drive is because where I am, regrettably, is equidistant from my office and metro. But I'm moving, first of all. And secondly, wow. So have you ever charged your employees for parking, at least?
Let me say one thing for Mr. May. Mr. May, upper management, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I asked a question.
I asked my question of my fellow commissioners. I wasn't looking for a response from you, but you're, you know, feel free to. You feel free to respond to Ms. Wright's question.
Let me ask first, let me say it this way. Upper management is very much aware of this.
Aware of what?
Aware of the fact that about the one to three parking ratio. They are much aware of this. Okay. Secondly, with response to you, it is all, we have in the 60s, I think, when Carter was president, he instituted paid parking. It was a major, major rebellion. When we, when we even mentioned the possibility, when we were putting the TMP together, we even mentioned the possibility of paid parking, oh my God. I actually got people's tickets because I was responsible for the first TMP. I was responsible for putting that together when I first came to NIH. I got people's tickets for parking. And so that is something that management do not want to go to.
Well, okay, but, you know, I don't, I can't say that I was jumping up and down with joy when I was told that, that I had to pay for parking. But, I mean, with all due respect, what makes NIH employees immune to the vagaries of federal employment that the rest of us experience?
I am only the messenger.
I understand, but I'm asking, I'm asking you to think about it because upper management has, apparently has tools in its toolbox, which it hasn't yet explored. I'm just making a point because it, it's, it's.
Let me, let me say, let me give you an example of the kind of upper management's attitude. When we first proposed this master plan to NIH, upper management, to deputy director, first thing she focused on was the parking garage. She was delighted that we were bringing more parking. So that tells you something.
Okay, but I work for GSA, and needless to say, we are sometimes unpopular. And we have to do unpopular things.
Oh, yeah.
And, and employee resistance is probably not, I mean, that's not the final word on the subject. I'm just, I'm just suggesting a possibility. And, and upper management, I understand, because I'm, I'm just the messenger too, for telling people they don't get to have private offices anymore. So I get it.
We're saying the same thing, but I think you need to understand the culture. It's that you're talking about a bunch of high-ranking scientists, you know?
I, I, I know. We, we.
You know, it's not just regular people.
They, but nobody thinks they're regular people.
Well, I agree with that. I agree with that to a point, but all I can say.
I mean, it would be, it would, it would make, I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but it would make me feel a lot better about all this if there was some signal from you that, that you're willing to consider other possibilities. But, but every suggestion that's coming at you is being met with no, no, no. And, and, and then we have 10 years of this and a TMP that's, how many years old? 25 years old?
And the reason for the TMP was, if we did not comply with the TMP, we will go to paid parking. And that's the reason we had keeping this TMP in place, because if we go to one to three, we're not going to pay parking. And that, that's a fact, and that's going to be a real problem.
Well, it wouldn't be, you know, the end of the world.
Maybe not, but at NIH, keep in mind, never mind, I won't say that because.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Herring, very much.
Could I, could I talk about something else just for a second?
We can keep the conversation among commission members.
Yes, on ballards. Can we talk ballards? I would, I would just like to propose that we consider amending the language. This is not necessarily a motion, a motion. I just want to know if it's possible to take out, in the language, discourages the use of ballards for security purposes and take out on secure federal campuses. For a bold stroke.
This is on page three?
Yeah. Because we do discourage the use of ballards, you know, everywhere now. The march of the penguins is over, and, and we have better, best practice now, and there are lots of solutions that don't involve ballards. And I just wondered if anybody would vehemently object to saying that more broadly, instead of just within federal campuses.
It's a motion I would second.
Yeah, do you want to make a?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Why don't you, why don't you offer specific language?
The specific language would be, notes that the commission discourages the use of ballards for security purposes, period. And take out on secure federal campuses.
Speaking to that.
Yeah, I just wonder whether, so are you offering a new document with that amendment to it, rather than amendment to the, because the document's not before us at this time?
Well, right. So whatever we want to follow procedurally, I was just sort of floating a trial balloon and trying to get off the parking subject.
Why don't we hold that motion for the moment?
Further discussion among commission members. Hearing on, is there a motion to put the draft EDR before us? There is no motion to move the EDR. Going once? Going twice?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. Is there a second to put the EDR before us?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. The EDR is enthusiastically before us.
So now we can discuss, right?
Now it's open for more formal discussion or amendment.
Well, I don't want to make a motion if we're, if the possibility, I mean, if we're going to reject it outright, there's no point in amending it. But procedurally, how do you do that?
Just make a motion?
Well, I mean, you can still amend it, but.
You can still amend it, but you can still amend it, and we will.
Okay, well, I would make my motion now, then.
It's been moved that we put a period after purposes and strike on secure federal campuses, period.
I second it, and I will, I guess we can speak to that amendment.
You can speak to the amendment, yes.
I just want to, I guess I've been consistent pressing for alternatives to ballots. And I know this body and government's been good about that, looking for other things that do the same thing, but often maybe amenities, et cetera, rather than ballots. So that's why I'm supporting removal of ballots. We got benches that do the same thing. We got tables that can do the same thing. See, a lot of options that we have in our toolkit that we might be able to use.
So it's been moved and seconded on the amendment. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. One abstention. So the two abstentions, thank you. So the amended EDR is before us for continued discussion. Is there additional discussion? So it's been, Mr. May?
Yeah, I would just say that I think that it does send the right message at this point if we were to vote down any approval in any form. Because I think that there, I think NIH at the, at the highest levels of their management need to understand that the 1 to 3 parking ratio is a vital component to the planning for federal facilities in the Washington area, and other agencies are held to it, and they should be held to it as well. So I think that we should not approve a single component of this at this time. Granted, there are important comments that are in there that the agency should hear, but I think that they've heard them, and they can continue to discuss this with staff and understand what those recommendations are. But I plan to vote against the EDR.
Let me make one comment. We, we may have two options before us. One is to take a vote, and sensing that vote could not, perhaps may not be successful. Another option is to lay it on the table, you know, if anyone has any thought about that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. In terms of the impact.
I'm sorry, you say, just table it.
I'm just asking. I'm just putting that as a possible. That way it doesn't outright reject.
I just would like to get maybe some feedback from staff as to what impact they delay of maybe a month or whatever it might be to the agency.
Can I add onto that just a quick question? Because what we were presented in the EDR is a request that NIH would come back in six months to update us on the parking. And what would that impact be if we were to approve today and get a report in six months? I mean, where is the teeth to what that would be?
Good comment. Mr. Acosta, do you have something to?
Well, let me try to take a stab at this. I think if you actually, I think it's important for you to make, take a stand, one way or another. So I think to the extent you say disapproves, you can say disapproves, period, or you can say disapproves and strike out with the, the first sentence of the recommendation, strike out with the exception of increased parking supply for the following reasons, say disapproves the final 2013 National Institutes Bethesda Campus Master Plan for the following reasons. You list out the reasons why, because it basically deals with parking issues. You still make notes of your concerns and ask them to come back in six months to respond. And I think that would basically send the message that you all are seeking to send. I think if you don't take an action today, you're basically saying nothing. It's basically being silent.
It's a focus back.
So we'd have to have a substitute motion at this point?
So if I understand, may I? If I understand correctly, what you suggest is that we modify the EDR to say, disapproves the final 2013 NIH Bethesda Campus Master Plan for the following reasons, and then essentially everything else stays the same.
And you can include that, it's rights.
Right, and that, that has been included. Or, sorry, it was previously included, but I would, so I would make that as a substitute motion.
So the substitute motion is to change disapproves to disapproves, and disapprove for the following reasons, and all of the other bullet points and notes, including the amended one, stays the same. That's the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? There is a motion and second, is a further discussion.
If I could just ask, because there was a question there, if we had, now we've already moved on from it, but if we had approved the original motion versus the substitute motion, it did have the requirement for coming back in six months, and there was the question, what is the teeth to ensure that that comeback and that dialogue happens? Is there, can they just ignore it?
Well, so we are, so we're on the same page. The commission in this case has advisory review of the, of the master plan. So under the, and correct me if I'm wrong, under the process, they do have the option to, to refuse your comments. So, but I think they would have to be clear about why, and they have to spell out their reasoning as part of it. So in any case, they would have to respond. So I think to the extent that if you're asking them to do more work to see if there is a way to address the parking issues over the long term, and with the data and all the other things you've asked them to do, they will provide that within the time period. Otherwise, they do have the right to.
Okay.
I will say on that, Mr.
Thank you.
Rhodes, that while we are advisory, the history has been that our exceedingly close collaboration with agencies, when we are in advisory role, our, our history and our record has been pretty extraordinarily positive, that agencies bend over backwards to work with us. And I would say probably in 99.5% of the time, agencies come into compliance with our advisory recommendations, and it would be highly unusual for an agency to flat-out thumb their nose at this commission. Ms. White, still on the motion?
I really appreciate the clarification and the comment that we are advisory, and if we don't reject it, then I think it is a pretty weak statement. And I, I think just for the record, I, I personally want to say I'm dumbfounded that NIH's policy is to provide free parking for all employees, and I don't see how they do it now. And hanging on to an over 20-year-old transportation master plan, I think, is really problematic. And I just want to encourage us in our conveyance to NIH that, that I would urge them to reexamine that philosophy.
Mr. Chairman, I just think the arithmetic is that even if they pay for it, there's still going to be spaces, and that's one of our concerns, I think. But I think it's very useful for them. I think they ought to be able to go back and look at this, and we can reach some, and I would use the word that agencies tend to be collaborative rather than responsive to us. We try to collaborate on this.
That's all.
Yes.
So the substitute motion before us, as amended, and sensing no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion to disapprove the EDR as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. There's one no.
Aye.
And two abstentions. So the motion passes. Mr. Wild, I'm sure you will continue your close work with NIH.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you very much for a very good and substantive discussion. And Mr. Herring, thank you for, thank you for coming. Agenda item number 5B is the draft real property master plan for the United States Sol, I'm sorry, we're going to, as noted, we're going to go to agenda item number 5C first. Agenda item number 5C is the draft real property master plan for the U.S. Soldiers' Home. We have Mr. Hart, and, yeah, we're doing that one first, right? That's right. Yeah. Confusing myself for a moment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The Department of the Army, through the Army National Military Cemetery Program, has submitted draft master plans for Arlington National Cemetery, as well as the U.S. Arm, U.S. Soldiers' and Airman's Home National Cemetery for your review. I will present both of these draft master plans and provide separate recommendations at the end of each. First, I'll start with the U.S. Soldiers' and Airman's Home National Cemetery and move to the Arlington National Cemetery next. Before I start, I'd like to note that next week, on April 9th, it marks the 150th anniversary of the end of the Civil War. The Civil War was a significant factor in the establishment of both cemeteries that I will be presenting today. These two master plans were submitted together because they are both under the jurisdiction of the same agency within the Department of the Army, which is the Army National Military Cemeteries Program. And both cemeteries are shown here in their regional location. The Army is proposing the U.S. Soldiers' and Airman's Home National Cemetery Draft Master Plan to address the need to provide additional interment space and make improvements on this site. As, this is a relatively small site, which you'll see in upcoming slides, the master plan includes only a few projects, which, which I will discuss in my presentation. As many of you know, as many of you may not be familiar with it, I'll give you some site context. You can see the Soldiers' and Airman's Home National Cemetery here. It's the triangular area that's highlighted in yellow. It is bounded by Howard Road, excuse me, Harwood Road to the south, Rock Creek Church Road to the north, and to the east is North Capitol Street on, on the eastern side. It is surrounded by a few large properties, the Armed Forces Retirement Home to the south, Rock Creek Church Cemetery to the northwest, and to northeast, a couple of blocks, is the Fort Totten Park. It was established during war, the Civil War in 1861, and it was originally just six acres. In 1874, it expanded to its current size of 16 acres to, to provide additional interment space for Civil War veterans. This 16-acre site is where more than 14,000 service members have been laid to rest. Currently, there are, on average, only seven interments per year, as it primarily serves the final rest, as the final resting place for veterans of the Armed Forces Retirement Home. As you can see in the inset image on the bottom left, this cemetery is primarily an open area with some scattered trees. There is a loop road that provides access to different parts of the cemetery, and a north-south connector roadway is also shown in this aerial as well. I'll describe, I will be describing in the next few slides some of the buildings and structures on the site. The main entrance for pedestrians and vehicles is along Harwood Drive, and it's located here. The, you see in the slide in the upper right is a ornamental gate at the corner of Harwood Drive and Rock Creek Church Road. On the bottom right is one of the few structures on the, on this cemetery, and it is the Superintendent's Lodge, and it's located near the, the main entrance. Also on the cemetery is a maintenance shed you see in the upper right image, as well as a Logan mausoleum, which is in honor of Major General John Logan, who was a Civil War general, as well as a politician. I'll note that Major General Logan was an influential person in his time, and he is recognized as the founder of Decoration Day, which is now known as Memorial Day. He is also the namesake for Logan Circle, which is where he resided when he lived in DC. The Superintendent's Lodge was designed by Brigadier General Montgomery Meigs. He was, as you are probably aware, the head of the Army Corps of Engineers in the mid to late 1800s, and designed many buildings in DC, including the Pension Building, which is now referred to as the National Building Museum. He has created, he created this lodge design that you see on the left, which used to be, which is, is used actually in all the national cemeteries. The image here on the left is the, what the Superintendent's Lodge used to look like, and the existing image on the right is what it, it looks like today. In a few minutes, I'll be, I'd like to note that I'll be talking about Brigadier General Meigs again when I present the Arlington National Cemetery Master Plan. The Army, the Army identified a number of goals for the master plan. They're shown here, and these were to provide a new interment space, provide accessible environment, use the resources wisely, supporting key attributes of the cemetery, reinforce the core mission of the cemetery, and enhance experience for families and visitors. The Army has identified three main projects as part of the master plan, and they're shown here. The first is to remove an existing roadway. There's a north-south connector road that I showed earlier, and this would be to provide additional interment space. Another project is to restore the Superintendent's Lodge, which the Army acknowledges was significantly altered since it was constructed in the 1800s. The Army is proposing that this, in an effort to support the key attribute, which is historic resource that the, that is in the cemetery. The third project is adding a screen wall around the maintenance yard, and the maintenance yard is located, located here. Currently, this yard is screened in, if you saw in a earlier slide, it was screened in with actually chain link fence. The Army is proposing to enhance this by adding a brick wall around that area. There are also several smaller projects, including infrastructure improvements, an information center, a repairing sidewalks around the cemetery, as well as adding signage and furnishing, such as seating, and a tree preservation program. Staff has reviewed the draft master plan and is generally supportive of the proposed projects. These projects will generally make improvements to the cemetery by restoring an existing building, adding a nicer screen fence around the maintenance area, adding signage and seating, as well as an information center. There is a, a small carriage house that they, that is used as storage, and they use that for the information center. And staff only, the, the only request that staff has is to, is with regard to the removal of the connector roadway, the, the north-south roadway in the middle of the cemetery. Staff is normally supportive of the removal of impervious services. However, historic preservation does play an important role here. The Army identified this cemetery as a historic resource, and as it dates back to the mid 1800s, but it did not undertake sufficient research to determine whether or not this connector road was, was added at that, at that time or at a later time, and didn't find out if there were archaeological resources that would be disturbed. Staff recommends that the Army conduct further research to understand the historic resources that may be affected by removing this connector road. And with that, the, the executive director's recommendation is that the commission support the draft master plan, including the restoration of the historic Meigs-designed Superintendent's Lodge, and request that the Army undertake further study to determine historic and archaeological resources likely to be affected by the proposed removal of the north-south roadway. And that concludes this part of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Pretty straightforward. Are there questions for Mr. Hart? Hearing none, is there a motion on the EDR?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. We're now going to agenda item number 5B, which is the real draft, the draft real property master plan for Arlington National Cemetery. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, sir. The Army has undertaken, as I said earlier, this master plan process as well, and this was to address the need to plan for several new expansion areas that have been added to the cemetery in, over the last few years. Generally, staff is supportive of the, of the draft master plan as it is a comprehensive look at its future development. Staff will present only a few comments at the end of this presentation concerning the development of what I'll talk about, which is the southern expansion, which may include a new administrative building, as well as a new interpretive center, as well as a proposed transportation center. So on to the master plan itself, or actually on to Arlington Cemetery itself. It's located, as you probably know, in Arlington County, Virginia. It is a 624-acre cemetery that was established in 1864. It's now a destination of national significance. Surrounding the cemetery are Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall, which is to the west, and I'll note for this, for all of the slides here, north is to the right. Also around the cemetery is George Washington Memorial Parkway to the east, to the southeast, the Pentagon Reservation, and then I, 395 is to the south. There is a Metro Rail Station that you see here with the blue line, it's actually a blue line and a blue, blue dot, that visitors use to gain access to the, to the cemetery. There are two expansion areas, 27-acre Millennium Expansion to the north, and the nearly 41-acre southern expansion, which is where the Navy Annex Building once stood. In addition to its function as a place of rest for over 400,000 service members, it is also a destination for, a major destination for tourists, with over 3 million visitors three million visitors every year. Here we have a few of the destinations that you're probably very familiar with. The President John F. Kennedy Gravesite and Eternal Flame, Arlington House in the upper right, Tomb of the Unknown Soldier in the bottom right, and then a view from Arlington House looking across the Memorial Bridge and Washington, D.C. in the background. In the foreground, I'd also like to note that it's L'Enfant's Gravesite, which is a fairly, fairly important person for NCPC. So, I know there's probably more history than I could talk about in this afternoon, but I wanted to hit a few, a few aspects. The, and what I've ended up doing is separated the history into two segments, eighteen hundreds on this slide, and then nineteen hundreds and to the present on the next. There are a few points that I'd like to highlight, and I've highlighted them on this slide here. In 1863, the existing land near the current Memorial Amphitheater was a Freedman's Village. Twenty years later, however, in 1883, the federal government turned the cemetery into a military installation and removed this Freedman's Village. The cemetery itself was first established in June of 1864 by Brigadier General Montgomery Meigs, who I mentioned in the last presentation. He didn't want Confederate General Robert E. Lee to return to his home, and his home was Arlington, Arlington House and the land surrounding it. General, Brigadier General Meigs appropriated the house and the land for use as a cemetery for Union service members, and as we know, the house and land still stand today. While the cemetery became a site of national significance, it became a major destination after President Kennedy was laid to rest here in 1963. That year, nearly seven million visitors arrived coming to visit the Kennedy Gravesite. Since then, the number of visitors has declined, but as I noted earlier, there are still three million visitors annually. Before the two expansions happened in, most recently in the last ten years, the last major expansion was in 1976, and that was the Land Development Ninety, which was a former, which was a portion of Fort Meyer at the time. And that area is in the, was in the eastern portion of the site. The approval of the previous master plan in 1998 also coincided with NCPC's approval for the development of Land Development Ninety. So it took about twenty years for that, that process to, that project to be submitted to NCPC. In 2013, NCPC approved the development of the Millennium Expansion, which added twenty-seven thousand more, excuse me, interment spaces to the cemetery. So, over the next few slides, I'll describe the existing conditions at the cemetery as they were provided for staff. The map here shows major activity areas on the, on the site. As you are well aware, there's a visitor center that's located along Memorial Ave., which is the main entrance to the, to the cemetery for, for visitors. There's a welcome center that's located here, as well as an administrative building that's located to the, just to the south of it. The, excuse me, the, there are a number of major destinations here as well that include the Women in Military Service for America Memorial, located at the terminus of Memorial Avenue, President Kennedy's Gravesite, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and Arlington House. And I recognize that I talked about these a little bit earlier, but wanted to show you where they were geographically on the, on the plan. The main active interments are also located, are also identified on this map. They're the green areas, so here in the eastern portion of the site, and the future interment sites are also shown here with the Millennium Expansion on the north, and then the southern expansion to the south. I'll also point out that the southern expansion, you might note, is several parcels, and this is because there are several roads that kind of cut through the site. The Army and Arlington County are in discussions about land exchange, as the county owns some of the land in this area. The final land transfer, as well as a possible realignment of Columbia Pike, will be determined in the future. I wanted to give a little closer-up view of the main entrance. There is, as I noted, the welcome center, which you see here on the right part of, the right portion of the slide, the picture of it, and then the administrative building, which is also, a photograph of also is included on this slide as well. There is a bus parking area that's to the east of the administrative building and the welcome center, as well as a visitor parking lot. The main administrative building is important because it not only houses the Arlington National Cemetery administrative staff, it also is the main gathering point for funeral services, where ANC representatives will escort families to the interment spaces in the cemetery. This is just to show the, some existing conditions with regard to topography, some of the views, and the bottom image is actually the main procession routes for committal services or funerals at the cemetery. So it shows kind of where they enter, as well as where they move around in the cemetery. Here are some major destinations for visitors arriving at Arlington National Cemetery. I've already noted where these, where these main locations are, the main sites. This was just to show the tour shuttle that goes around the installation, the cemetery, to provide some vehicular access to it, as well as the walking direction and routes through the, the main part of the cemetery as well. As with the previous master plan, the Army identified a number of goals, and these are shown here. Primarily, they're are exactly the same as the Soldiers and Airman's Home Cemetery, with the exception of the last one, which is to improving circulation. The Army identified some circulation problems in the cemetery and has provided some projects to address that. And the Army used all of the goals to develop a master plan that is separated into short, mid, and long-term projects, and I'll give a summary of these projects in upcoming slides. So, these are the kind of five main groups that the project can be broken down into. The development of new interment areas, which is really focused on planning for the Millennium Expansions, as well as the Southern Expansion, accommodations for families and veterans, which is providing clearly marked parking for families arriving at the funeral services, as well as kind of signage and things around the main administrative building, enhancing the visitor experience, improving, improvements to cemetery operations, and providing adequate staff accommodations for ANC staff. I know you can't read this, or it's a lot of information on it. The projects are, those projects that are being proposed are just broken down into those five main components for your benefit. They, more detailed information is actually found in the EDR about the specific projects. Staff is supportive of these projects, however, would like to highlight a few that are highlighted on this slide in orange. The proposed transportation center consists of constructing a new building in the midterm as an exist, at the existing bus parking area. This new center would include restrooms, a waiting area, and ticket booths for tours. The existing waiting area in the welcome center, the Army notes, is overcrowded, and the new building would help to reduce this crowding. The southern expansion includes additional interment spaces in the short, as well as the midterm, and a new administrative building for Arlington National Cemetery staff, and an interpretive center for visitors are both listed as long-term projects. The Army states that the new administrative building is needed because of current inadequate space for its staff, and the interpretive center is to provide visitors with additional information about the cemetery. Staff has reviewed the draft master plan and is, as I noted, supportive of the proposed changes as they are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that these changes will enhance the cemetery's experience for visitors and provide additional interment spaces for many years to come. Making improvements to accommodate the visitors who are attending a committal service is, staff finds is commendable, as well as needed. Staff has also reviewed the master plan, the previous master plan in 1998, and see this master plan as a continuation of that, as that 1998 document included or envisioned the expansions at the, what is now known as the Millennium Site, as well as the former Navy Annex Site. And as this plan moves forward, staff would like to focus its comments on the three projects that I noted earlier, the transportation center, the welcome center, and the interpretive center, and has a comment about the Air Force Memorial as well. With regard to the transportation center, staff understands that the, this proposed center is, is to provide better facilities for visitors, many of whom arrive by bus. Staff is supportive of this building, however, would ask that the Army develop an interim plan for bus parking, because some of this, of the parking may be displaced during the construction of this facility. Regarding the southern expansion, staff does agree that the Army should continue working with Arlington County to develop a plan that will allow for the land transfers for the benefit of both groups. Staff understands that ANC, or the Army, is considering moving the administrative building to this southern site, as staff is, at the existing administrative building is currently inadequate, or the space is inadequate, as Arlington County is no longer pursuing its plans to bring a streetcar down Columbia Pike, which is here, Columbia Pike. Staff would caution that moving the administrative building may make it less transit accessible. Staff would instead recommend developing this new administrative building in an area that would be transit accessible, at least as transit accessible as the existing administrative building. Regarding the development of the interpretive center, since both the 9/11 memorial for the, at the Pentagon, as well as the Air Force Memorial are close by, and staff would encourage the Army to work with both the Pentagon Memorial Fund, as well as the Army, the Air Force, to possibly develop a joint facility that could benefit all of the groups. And finally, staff understands that the Air Force Memorial is surrounded by cemetery property, as you can see on the slide here. So this is the Air Force Memorial itself. Staff recommends that the Army coordinate with the Air Force to determine the fencing that would be appropriate for this location, to ensure that it is carefully integrated into the design of the entire area. And with that, the Executive Director's recommendation is that the Commission support the draft Arlington National Cemetery Master Plan, which is a comprehensive twenty-five-year framework for increasing internet, excuse me, interment capacity, providing family and visitor amenities, and providing required administrative space, and requests that the Army undertake the following as it continues to develop the master plan. Develop an interim plan for bus parking during planning for the new transportation center. Explore alternative sites for the administrative building that are transit accessible. Coordinate planning with the, for the Arlington National Cemetery Interpretive Center with planning for the Air Force Memorial Visitor Center and the Pentagon Memorial Fund Visitors Education Center. And then finally, coordinate with the Air Force on the location and character of the fence that's surrounding the Air Force Memorial. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. The question before us is to approve the comments on the draft master plan. With that, is there discussion among us, or questions for Mr. Hart regarding proposed comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the EDR?
Still moved.
It's been moved and...
Seconded.
Seconded. Sensing no further discussion, all in favor of the EDR say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 6A, we're down to just the, that concludes our action items. Agenda Items 6A and 6B are information presentations, and Ms. Bush is here for each. Agenda Item 6A is an information presentation on the urban design element of the comprehensive This will lead in part to a discussion of 6B. In part. This, it's, the reason for 6B frankly is, with the assistance of Commissioner Wright and others, we had done an extraordinary amount of work on the design element. A lot of that work was interrupted as we did a year-long work on the height master plan. Now we are picking this up and moving forward. So there's a little bit of Design Element 101 to do now, especially since we have some new faces. Ms. Bush, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm here to give you a brief update on the status of the urban design element and our plans for moving forward. Today will be an overview with a focus on resources, issues, and general direction, not specific policy proposals. As the Chairman just mentioned, and you may recall, the, well, we, the urban design element is new to our federal elements. The district, however, does have an urban design element, which includes a number of important planning principles for the city, including our commercial and residential areas. We prepared a draft under the direction of a task force, and we released the draft element for a sixty-day public comment period in November of 2012. Right at about that time, however, we were directed to undertake the Height Act study, which we understood would contain relevant technical information, particularly the visual modeling study, as well as a fairly extensive public outreach. So we placed the urban design element on hold until the completion of the Height Act study. While much of the discussion of the study was about building height, there was a broader dimension that looked explicitly at the form and character of the city and national interest in its image. The final commission report included a fairly substantive discussion about the form and character of the Monumental Core, the importance of the L'Enfant Plan's streets, and a recommendation to undertake viewshed protections in the comprehensive plan. Congress ultimately passed a modest amendment to the Height Act that was consistent with NCPC's recommendation, and therefore were proceeding with the urban design element, assuming the existing conditions that are set forth in the Height Act. And so staff is currently preparing a new element that incorporates the guidance from the task force and some of our lessons from the Height study. We presented a broad overview of the whole element last summer, but since we have many new members here today, we thought we could step back and brief you on the entire element before we bring the project forward this spring. And in terms of this presentation, I'll provide a snapshot of the entire element, but we'd like to focus most of our time today on our viewshed work, as it's the newest content and it includes a distinct set of questions and issues. Also, as we've been preparing the urban design element, we've completed some external planning work related to viewsheds, working with both the D.C. Office of Planning and Arlington County's Planning Department, and our work highlights that together, we're reinforcing important qualities that set our capital city apart. And we'd like to thank the D.C. Planning Staff and the Arlington County's Planning Staff for graciously working with us, and you'll see some of that work later on in this presentation. The element includes an introductory overview section and two policy sections, which are listed on the screen here. And taking a look at the first policy section, which is outlined here, we'll take the next few slides to highlight some of the main topic areas that we'll address in this section, the first of which is Washington's unique urban design framework, particularly how our built environment responds to national, natural geographic conditions. When people think about the urban design framework for the city, I generally think they're thinking about the L'Enfant Plan. And while the historic plan is important itself, we must also consider it as a relevant urban design framework that has important planning principles and is, in essence, a coherent, a coherent system of public spaces that continues to shape the human experience of the city in both subtle and formative ways. So part of the work of this urban design element is to describe how these parts function together, not just on paper, but as a three-dimensional system. Staff has identified six main components that create our urban design framework, which are listed on the screen here. And these components uniquely fit together to contribute to our image as the national capital, and they include features that emphasize national symbols, skyline form, and views. The first policy section will also address the character of our Monumental Core, which is known for its large-scale civic and institution, cultural institutions that are placed within gracious settings. And we like to think of the Monumental Core as vital to the functions of our government and also the place of many of our important ceremonies. There are a number of planning challenges that are associated with the Monumental Core that are influencing the way that we're thinking about urban design policy, and a point of reference is our Monumental Core Framework Plan that asserts a vision for improving the public spaces and street-level pedestrian experience in... the public spaces and street-level pedestrian experience in the area. And this notion of improving the public realm and pedestrian experience will also be addressed more broadly within the urban design element. We care very much about ensuring that our urban design framework and the symbolic imagery of the nation's capital is kept intact, but the components within the framework should also provide for an ever-evolving city that has both a national and a local identity. Now turning to the second policy section, which is outlined on the screen here, the central idea behind this section is to sensitively locate federal facilities within the city and region, and to do so using sound planning principles. First, to support the workplace experience for federal employees, and second, to resolve urban design issues that may arise between a federal tenant and a host community. Our federal interests in the city and region are less concentrated and more focused than, say, within the Lempont City, but sites such as the Naval Observatory, the Fourth Circle Parks, the Armed Forces Retirement Home in Lincoln Cottage, and the International Chancery Center are all significant federal interests. Looking more broadly at the region, we have a number of federal facilities and campuses, and planning strategies should integrate these spaces within their environs and also within the campus itself. So some of the key goals for this policy section include enhancing the pedestrian and visitor experience, encouraging high-quality design, and also encouraging design that responds to the context of the surrounding communities. Now I'll turn to viewsheds, where we'd like to spend the remainder of our time today. One of the most frequent comments we heard during the height work is how much the public values the city's viewsheds, and many of these views are not just a product of happenstance. The capital city was designed to be experienced and viewed from edge to edge, and sweeping panoramic vistas, long views of the skyline's iconic landmarks, memorials, and also natural features, are qualities that make Washington unique among other cities and really reinforce its role as the nation's capital. The views and visual relationships that connect the city's system of public spaces is a public trust and a valued amenity that shape the human experience and are really at the core of Washington's urban design framework. While developing a framework for viewshed policies, one of the key challenges for staff has been the fact that viewsheds don't follow jurisdiction lines, and also, the elements that make up a viewshed composition may be maintained by several different jurisdictions. So a key question is how can we appropriately shape policies for something like viewsheds, which are quite ubiquitous in nature? The quality and variety of Washington's views and vistas prompts some important policy questions, two of which are listed at the top of the screen here. And these questions highlight some important core planning and urban design issues that our planning staff has confronted in some of our recent external work related to views. So we prepared the next set of slides to address these questions and also share some of the related core issues, which are listed at the bottom of the screen here. And these particular issues are not the only ones, but rather a sampling of those that we're working through to address and incorporate into the urban design element at a policy The first issue we'll look at is the design of our public realm, and to understand how the various elements of our public realm influence important views that define the image of our capital city, we'll start with a familiar view, this one being looking down Pennsylvania Avenue at the U.S. Capitol Building. And for our purposes today, we'll call this a linear view, as there's an axial line of sight between the observer and the focal point at the terminus. The space behind the focal point we'll refer to as the background, and the space between those two points, we'll refer to today as the middle ground. And this is the space where we see many public realm elements that contribute to enframe this view of the U.S. Capitol Building. Streetscape and landscape programs are an important public realm element that contribute to a views composition. And here we can see diagrammed on Pennsylvania Avenue, the tree canopy, for a majority of the year serves as the primary visual element that frames the Capitol Building. Another element in the public realm that contributes to this view is built infrastructure, such as that for transit. For example, we see here that DDOT uses vertical lighting elements that have limited horizontal armatures and also happen to be removable here. And this current practice of locating functional elements in this way maintains the openness of pedestrian-level views to important landmarks, and it also highlights the fact that the composition of this view is just as much about those elements that we don't have in the public realm along our streets. Compared to other cities, we have a limited amount of infrastructure in the right-of-way here, and this raises a general statement about the public realm in Washington. We have a long planning legacy of protecting views in other public, major public areas from visual incursions that give the city that sense of open skies that people cherish. The next urban design topic we'll look at today is edges and transitions. And to understand how edges and transitions influence views, we'll look at another familiar linear view, this one being North Capitol Street, again, looking at the Capitol Building. The built and natural edges along this street define a frame for the important symbolic landmark at the end, and what we see highlighted here are a generally consistent and symmetrical building edge and roofline that frames this view of the Capitol Building. And the form and character of these building edges is just as much about the leadership of local zoning as it is about other design controls like the Height Act. We're grateful for the work of the District Office of Planning, who engaged with our staff to look at North Capitol Street through the current District of Columbia zoning regulations review. The rendered images on the right side of the screen are some massing studies that our staff completed while working with DCOP to understand proposed building heights south of K Street facing the U.S. Capitol Building. This street is an important gateway into the Monumental Core, and because topography slopes down toward the Capitol Building, height plays an important role in how preeminent the dome appears in the viewer's line of sight. Ultimately, we agreed that private buildings on the blocks south of K Street would be scaled to maintain the visual frame around the U.S. Capitol Building using setbacks to preserve the street wall and cornice lines. And a question for future study, are densities north of K Street along the corridor? North Capitol Street is a point of transition between high-density development on the east side of the street near the Noma neighborhood and lower-density established residential neighborhoods on the west side. And the rendered image on the bottom-right side of the screen is a visual example of what a potential transition could look like. And a question is how can this transition be designed so that North Capitol can also function as a prominent gateway corridor? The last urban design issue that we'll discuss today is our capital city skyline form. This issue is particularly pertinent to our city's important panoramic views. For example, here we're looking at a panoramic view, as seen from the front lawn of Arlington House and the Arlington National Cemetery grounds, and these panoramic views are typically those that span across the skyline and look toward significant buildings, landmarks, and natural features. Panoramic views occur both within the city and also from outside the city looking in. And part of what makes panoramic viewsheds so special is that we're able to see the city and composition from many different vantage points at the pedestrian level. Lots of cities have overlooks in private buildings, but how many put such a premium on the pedestrian experience where public land is the point of view for a panoramic view? Also to note today, public buildings and monuments are the most significant structures that break the horizontal skyline and define it. And this hierarchy within our skyline was explicitly planned for. Our built environment and our skyline responds to the natural geography in which the city was located, and some of our most important national resources have been located with respect to topography. It's also important to note that our skyline has both old and new elements, which highlights an important urban design principle, that the creative contribution of each new generation has a place in our nation's capital. This is a living and an evolving city, and our urban design framework can accommodate both old and new. This next slide further illustrates how our built environment responds to topography. Both Arlington and DC are included in these sections because we, both places share these common geographic features of lowlands by the confluence of the rivers that ascend toward the surrounding ridge line. And in many places, the ridge condition is relatively visually intact because we maintain these low-lying building walls along the ridge, and for a variety of reasons, we've concentrated our buildings of greater heights at lower elevations. In addition, an additional design condition that contributes to the form of the skyline in DC is the Height Act, which is a blanket height control that has resulted in a relatively uniformed skyline, especially in our dense downtown areas. And this image here is a good illustration of our horizontal skyline, the ridge line in the background, which forms the horizon, and also this transition from buildings of greater height at a lower elevation and a shift toward buildings of shorter height as you ascend toward the escarpment. And together, these geographic conditions and design controls create a hierarchy in our skyline that seems appropriate for a capital city, and that the skyline gives deference to important public buildings and landmarks. Looking at panoramic views in some of our recent planning efforts, we had the opportunity to work with Arlington County's planning staff, who approached us to review and provide feedback on their Envision Courthouse Square Plan, specifically looking at potential impacts for views from the National Mall. And the courthouse plan re-envisioned the central civic core within Arlington County, and as the picture at the top of the screen demonstrates, the courthouse neighborhood is on axis with the National Mall, and a product of that axial relationship is that the courthouse building skyline is very much a part of this western vista composition when seen from the National Mall. The skyline frames westward views namely of the Washington Monument and the Lincoln Our staff provided a series of 3D modeling simulations, some of which are shown here, of proposed building heights based on what was proposed within the courthouse plan for both of our staffs, as well as our federal partners, to evaluate. And what we were trying to understand from this modeling was whether the building scales under consideration would significantly change the character of these westward views. And Arlington County was considering potential building heights ranging from 210 feet to 300 feet on three different locations. NCPC provided a joint comment letter with the National Park Service and the Commission of Fine Arts that supported Arlington County's planning staff's recommendation for a maximum 210-foot building height within the study area. Looking at this from a design perspective, the feedback we provided spoke to the importance of the form and character of the Monumental Core and its setting. The courthouse skyline that frames these westward views today is relatively uniform and consistent, but as the courthouse skyline develops over time, it will not only influence the content, local context in Arlington, but as we can see, will also influence the regional context of our nation's capital. And also, I'll mention that to follow this information presentation, we have a staff member here from Arlington County today who'll provide a more in-depth look at this plan and our work together. Lastly, looking forward to policy development, in addition to addressing the core issues that we talked through today, staff is also working on a viewshed classification system. For example, there are a few particular views that characterize or symbolize the imagery of our Capitol, and those views will receive more detailed guidance, but to be clear, we're not planning to have prescriptive language that defines specific technical viewshed boundary extents. Rather, our policies will focus on identifying important elements that create the composition of our important views. And over the next couple of months, our game plan is to complete a full draft policy document to bring to the Commission for review this spring. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you very much. Very good presentation. Mr. Chairman.
First of all, I, I've seen the comprehensive plan presented for a number of years, and I think this is a very excellent job you guys have done. It's getting colorful and attractive. It makes me even want to open and read it more than some of the older ones have been. So I think it's really a great job. I want to point out, though, that, you know, I'm always shifting my views to east of the river. And I know that, that Peter will know what I'm going to talk about, the Anacostia Park, and what we can do to make it a part of it. It's all through this document about parks, space, la di da. And we got this Anacostia River Initiative. I know the planning office is, is being engaged in it. There's, there is a, a, a hope that we can do a more comprehensive work with, with certainly the blessing and encouragement at some time with the Park Service and with Peter's book, to look at how the park can spill over into our neighborhood in a positive way. I don't mean like flood over, I mean like green jobs that will create revenue immediately that can help us afford some housing for folks who are there who don't have jobs now. Green jobs that make you PhDs and other kind of Ds that can be future job opportunities. It's a global issue, and I think that, I see Peter smiling, so he, he's heard some of this, but I hope that the NCPC will keep this in mind. I have a lot of thoughts, I have marked a lot of pages, but I won't bore to get everybody into that now, and maybe we can do some more with it, but it's a real hope, and it's the one place we have with a lot of land available that needs to be kept green, and also maybe some institutional presence that will help train people in areas that will give them jobs immediately and in the future. So it's a real opportunity, and, and it's also resources, right, Peter? I understand. But thank you for this, this is very helpful. Thank you.
So I presume we're looking to release the draft soon?
Yes.
And spring is here, so approximately when?
Hopefully next month.
Next month? Come back before us? Okay.
It'll be electronic too, will it not, Mr. Chairman? It'll be electronic, because it's going to be hard copy-only.
I believe we'll be able to provide both.
Yeah, I figured you would be, given you guys.
So that ends Part A.
Yes.
Any questions on this before we go continue on?
You know what, I should go ahead and underscore what the Vice Chair, the newly-minted Vice Chair...
By the way, thank you all for your votes. I didn't lobby anybody, but I appreciate it. Actually, I have had blessed with that opportunity, but I've been fighting a little bit for some personal reasons, but I'm glad, and thank you all for your, thank you. I'll do my best. I told the Chairman, "Don't be absent, please."
I know better than to leave you in charge.
It'll be similar agenda, you know.
All right. So anyway, to underscore what you had said about the Anacostia, you know, we've, it certainly has been a focus of our attention for a long time in a number of different initiatives, and we recently started compiling some information about all of the activities that are going on along the Anacosta, on Anacostia, not just the ones that we're involved in, which is from, everything's, from the completion of the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail into Maryland, which is under construction, and I don't recall the exact completion date, but that's, that work is underway, to our continued planning effort with the Office of Planning on Poplar Point to clean up of some of the contaminated sites like Kennelworth Park, and, and, and of course, Langston Golf Course and other important attributes all along the Anacostia, and it's a pretty amazing display of things. We have a, a plan that we're, or a graphic that describes this, that in order to see it with any kind of understanding of what it is, it has to be like eight feet long. It really is an impressive collection of stuff, but you're right, the issue is resources, and I know the city is bringing some, and others are bringing resources to it, and the Park Service is doing its best as well. But we're, we're in it for the long haul, and we look forward to a rejuvenated Anacostia.
Yeah. I think also the, the resources, we've been looking at a lot of funding resources outside of the government, the Anacostia Coordinating Council, working with other people, Doug, with the Federal City Council and others. So we're going to try to find more resources, and we need to do that. The other thing I would point out is that, knowing there's some interest at the, in the Commission, in Congress Heights, I'd like to see us reach this, this, this Anacostia River green, green job stuff, so we can end up creating income for folks who can buy into the housing there and use the consortium of universities that's there, and the technology of Microsoft, which is there, to focus on environmental kinds of technology, et cetera, and training. And it, I mean, it can help a lot on our side. And I told the mayor yesterday, who spoke about it and identified our new, our new Deputy Mayor, that we're going to show them how to solve problems all across the city, maybe across the globe, in Anacostia, because we got the spirit and the energies and the needs. So that's a pitch.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shaw.
So I just also wanted to note that part of my tenure is really focusing on urban design as well, and so I'm glad my staff's been working with you, but we're really trying to understand sort of where, what's the DC aesthetic in terms of the very local aesthetic of where people live and, and how people work that's sort of independent of the federal character, understanding how those come together. So I'm really excited about this being launched and continuing some ongoing, some ongoing dialogues about that. So we're sort of calling it the, the local monuments, and really understanding how those tie in together, if we call it DC monuments, and how that ties in in terms of public spaces, and then really making sure that the, the federal spaces and the, and the public spaces really, the district spaces really amplify and, and work off of each other. So this will be an ongoing conversation with the Office of Planning over the upcoming, hopefully, four years, eight years.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, very much. Mr. Bush, Ms. Bush, shall we continue?
Yeah.
With Agenda Item Number 6B, which is our final Agenda Item and Information Presentation on the Arlington County Envision Courthouse Square Plan.
Right. Well, this information presentation, we talked about briefly a few minutes ago. Our staff had the opportunity to work with Arlington County's planning staff and review their Envision Courthouse Square Plan, specifically looking at views to the National Mall, and to... And today, we're fortunate to have Arlington County staff here with us. And I'd like to introduce Jason Besky, who is a principal urban designer with Arlington County, to provide the commission with a more in-depth look at the Envision Courthouse Square plan as well as our work together.
Mr. Besky, welcome. And we are very happy about the close working relationship we've developed.
Thank you.
It's been terrific.
Thank you. Thank you. And well, on behalf of Arlington County Department of Community Planning and Housing Development, thank you for the opportunity to present this informational item. I would like to say that our work and discussions with the NCPC staff has really been enjoyable, fruitful, and we, through this particular project and additional discussions, we've really been able to build a spirit of camaraderie across the river. So appreciate that. And I think this particular project will kind of show at a ground level and then pulling it up into the height and massing Ms. Bush was referring to, that we can work together to really create some change, both, not only in Arlington County, but, you know, in the region. So I hope this is an enjoyable presentation, something kind of fun to sit back and see. So if you're not familiar with Courthouse, Courthouse is the courthouse metro station area. It is the second stop on the silver and orange line into Arlington. So it's two stops past Foggy Bottom. So very close to the district, but also really the heart of the community for Arlington and the heart of our civic center. So you'll see the orange line here, the larger outline. In our metro station plan, we have along the RV corridor, the Roseland-Boston corridor, and as well as the Jefferson-Davis corridor, there's these urban villages that we have. And Courthouse happens to be one of those urban villages, encompasses 230 acres. And for each of these urban villages, we have sector plans. So we really look in depth at the urban design framework, the land uses, and economic development in these particular areas. So you'll see at the center of that is Courthouse Square. That's about a 10-acre area at the center of this metro station area. This is just a close-up of that. You'll see those 10 acres along this, if you can see the cursor here, this is Clarendon and Wilson Boulevard, which really makes up the main street of our linear downtown from the Roseland to Boston corridor. So this is really the focus of our retail, restaurant, and really the energy that becomes our main streets throughout Arlington. You'll see also this particular building here, Courthouse Plaza, that is our current government center. And next to that is a big parking lot. What prompted us to really look at Courthouse Square about a year and a half ago, December of 2013 is when we picked this up and really started to look at what the future of our community could be and how the heart of the community could become something much greater than a parking lot at the center of it. Our lease is coming up for this particular building, so it prompted us to start looking at, do we build somewhere else? We own a lot of this land. What are our options for the future? So we started to look at this discreet 10-acre area as, you know, what could we do for a number of elements in that urban design framework? So these are the five areas we look at typically in our metro station areas within those sector plans. Circulation being the road network, bicycle lanes, transit, including metro, because we do have metro stops at many of these. Just a quick fact, the courthouse metro station area has the second highest residential density of any, within a half mile of metro stop of any of the metro stops on the network. Columbia Heights, I believe, is number one. Open spaces, we look at not only parks, but plazas, streetscapes. How do those play into the urban design framework overall? Buildings, we're looking at the use of the buildings, the location of the buildings, the massing, the architecture. Cultural resources typically end up being those historic elements that are related to the area. In this particular case, Courthouse is high up topographically. It was part of the defenses around Washington. Fort Woodbury was there during the Civil War. So being high up in topography also means it's highly visible. And then finally, sustainability, we've mentioned this in all of our plans recently, but particularly Courthouse Square, we want to look at sustainability elements permeating throughout the entire plan that we look at, all the way from stormwater to energy. So we are developing an integrated energy master plan for the facilities in and around Courthouse Square as part of this plan as well. So if you're familiar with Arlington, you may be familiar with the Arlington Way, which really is an intense but fruitful opportunity to work with our citizens, to come up with a common and shared vision. We have very, very many engaged and educated citizens in Arlington who want to lend their input into our civic engagement processes. So throughout this process, we have engaged well over 1,000 people, many of our committees and commissions that are appointed by our county board, as well as many interdepartmental meetings. We look at this design exploration as we've gone through iterations of the design concepts for Courthouse Square as really a journey to get to where we are today. And that journey has really been multifaceted, where we've had a working group that's been made up of citizens that are appointed by the county board, the community at large, the advisory groups that I mentioned, as well as staff. So this is a staff-driven plan that we have worked with the community to really fine-tune and hone in what that future of the government center should be. This is an aerial of Courthouse Square. Again, you can see that parking lot at the center. You can see our county government facility here. This is Wilson and Clarendon Boulevard. But there's many development opportunities in this area. One of the assumptions we went into this project with was that the parking lot would go away. We knew that. And then likely that that parking would go underground into structured parking, and we're also looking at reduced parking ratios. So this is another look at the study area. You can see some of the pictures here. We do have some good bones to work with. We have a nice plaza. We have nice storefronts. There's a lot of retail activity. As I mentioned, there's a lot of residential development around here, so there's a lot of need for some of these retail and restaurant activities. But again, the parking lot really isn't serving the purpose that it should for us. In 2002, Arlington was awarded the EPA's first award for excellence in smart growth for the Roseland-Boston corridor, and this is mainly based on the decisions that were made in the 1960s to put that metro system underground and really develop these transit-oriented villages throughout the area. But it's tough to be proud of that 100% while we at the heart of the community have this parking lot that sits there. But I want to think that this is a land bank for something that we can really take and create something outstanding and great for the community moving forward into the 21st century. So bubbling up through all of this community input, we created this common shared vision. And just for a couple of them, I mean, it really is the heart of the community. We want to make this the central gathering place of the community, and it's going to give us a lot of opportunities for both active and passive recreation as we move forward. One story I can tell you is that, and I say this kind of half-heartedly, where the revolution begins, but when the Occupy movement came to Arlington before it rested in DC, I could look out my office window and see people walking down that Roseland-Boston corridor, the Wilson-Clarendon Boulevard corridor. They didn't have anywhere to stop to protest, so they kept walking into Washington DC. So we want a place for protest. I don't think that's asking too much. So, all right. We went through several iterations of this concept plan. Derek had showed you a couple iterations. And what we've rested on and where we're moving recent, most recently, is we have about five or six key development sites. And we have, if you look at the center here, you see this blue. And what we want to do is relocate our metro entrances. Right now, we have metro entrances at this corner, which will stay, and then there's one here in this plaza. But they're both kind of hidden away. We wanted to create a central metro access point that serves not only as access to metro and ingress and egress, but also as a focal point and a landmark. So people can come out of the metro station and look to the south and see a new civic building, something that's very symbolic, maybe three to four stories, something that has front steps where people can go and say their piece, something that says Arlington. Right now, we don't have that. So this was a very important piece of this plan, was to have the central metro access. But also, adjacent to that, we have what is a green space. From this street here to this street here inbound within these other two is about two acres roughly. If you look at a plan such as Pioneer Courthouse Square in Portland, you have about, if this is the courthouse in Portland, and I don't know if anybody's been to Pioneer Courthouse Square, but it's, as a planner, it's a great place to be. It's a great precedent for us to use as urban designers. But it's approximately a little over one acre area, and they have over 300 programmed events a year in this space. So it really is their outdoor living room. There's even a plaque in the space that says it's Portland's outdoor living room. So when we look at this concept plan, we envision creating that outdoor living room and that central gathering place for Arlington. But to do that, there's these development opportunities. And I'll just say that, you know, some of the building heights in Roseland, for example, not necessarily on axis with the National Mall, but those building heights are 300 feet plus. And again, we're looking at building heights above that. So we look at development opportunities to help support our future development. So as part of this study, we're looking at how tall should these buildings be? What should the building uses be? We know we want government center. We want the civic building here where a person can get out of the metro, come into a county board meeting, get their permitting. Right now, you have to go to and fro to access all of those services. But we also have county administration building here to back that up, and we have private development ringing that. So we looked at how large should this private development be? What are the heights that we should be considering? And we start to model that and pull that concept plan up out of the ground. And what we're looking at is the highest points right now, and the above sea-level heights for these areas are, the sea level, above sea level, probably about 225 feet above sea level, a little higher, is where Courthouse sits. So any of these heights you see are on top of 225, 230 roughly in that area. So when you add, say, 210 feet to this particular building here, we've called this building the landmark building since 1993. It was seen as an opportunity to really create a central focal point, not only in Courthouse, but in the Arlington area, because it is such a prominent location. But if you add 225 feet to that, you're well into the 400s, getting close to the above sea-level height of the Washington Monument. So we start to consider some of these elements. So this is the latest watercolor rendering that we have based on our latest concepts. And what we wanted to do, and you can see that the parking's gone, and the park's on top and the parking's underneath, but if you look at some of these buildings and the terracing on these buildings, we really wanted to take that two acres of central open space. We have other plazas that equal about, create about a four-acre open space network. But we start with these terraces to expand the green space for the area and create additional green opportunities and sustainability opportunities for Courthouse Square. So we felt it was really important to have vertical green elements as well. You can see that central metro station area here. And then this next slide I'm going to show you, the next rendering, is going to be taken from this vantage point, looking this way. This particular street here, if you haven't heard of the shared street concept, it really takes, I guess it looks at, if you know the word vuurnerf, Dutch term, for a shared space to really put the automobile, the vehicle, the bicycle, all on equal footing in this area. We know we wanted to slow down traffic. We know there's a lot of pedestrians who are moving across this area. So we really wanted to take and create a shared common space, not only with the open spaces, but also with the streets in this area, realizing that we can calm some of the traffic with some of these techniques. The lines you see in the road there are not streetcar tracks. They are actually paving. So it's an alternative texture. We're not putting a streetcar in North Arlington either. And you can see the central metro access beyond. So that's the point where you can start to see that this is actually a landmark and something that can attract the eye. Now, moving to those height studies again, Derek had shown this section, and it's very much on axis, as she had mentioned, the courthouse area with the National Mall. And this is just the shortened section. So if we were testing a 300-foot tall building, you can see how that equates with the height of the monuments in the Capitol. So this is that view again, that backdrop. If you look at these buildings right here, that is about the 210-foot mark. When we took this modeling that NCPC staff did, and this was one of the first iterations when we were looking at two buildings at 300 feet, and we did this outreach to the community prior to really engaging with NCPC staff and looking at the overall heights. And when we came back to the community with the information that we were provided by NCPC staff, it was very eye-opening. And board members were even starting to understand that this backdrop that you see is pretty important to maintain some of that. And then when you start to put buildings at 300 feet, it does start to impact your view to Arlington and the view along the National Mall. And these are some of the heights we tested. That's 300 feet. That's 230 feet. Still an impact. But when you get to the 210 feet, it starts to minimize the impact and create a common backdrop for Arlington and on the National Mall. This was the second development site at 300 feet, at 230 feet, and then at 210 feet.
Mr. Besky, did the board members welcome this analysis and assessment and generally nod their heads and appreciate the impact?
Yes, and that's exactly what we've gotten so far, is a head nod. So in the next, in the next steps, we're looking for adoption by July. We do briefings with the board members and planning commissioners and other committees and commissions along the way. And we wanted to check in and make sure we're moving in the right direction and that we're not going to have any surprises when we get to adoption. So we were basically told, yes, you're moving in the right direction. This is very eye-opening. Thank you for the information. And they're seeing the camaraderie that's been built here as well and the work that we're doing together.
And an internal question, if I might. And your economic development department also understands and embraces and generally agrees.
Yes, yes. And, you know, looking at a, our current site plan process, if you look at the zoning for this building, the landmark block, and this one's the strayer block, we call it, an applicant could currently come in and request up to 180 feet. They would have to earn that through bonus densities and, you know, contributing different elements. But looking at 210 feet in this particular area, that's outside of Crystal City where they can achieve higher heights, and Roseland, it's kind of unprecedented. So this is where we're kind of testing that zoning to go above that 180 feet for the first time outside of Crystal City and Roseland. And yes, we've been given the nod and the comfort level to pursue what we're doing. And economic development is very much behind us, as, you know, we have a unified staff position, yes. So with that, our next steps, we continue to take the current iteration of this plan and shop it, I shouldn't say shop it, and to work with our committees and commissions to get their support. And we are moving towards a community open house in May, where it's almost going to be kind of a mixer environment, where people are going to come and see what we're unveiling, see the new renderings, and just kind of see what the heart of the community is going to look like. And then, as I mentioned, we're looking at adoption by this summer, perhaps as late as September for the Envision Courthouse Square plan. So with that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Are there comments or questions for Mr. Besky or Ms. Bush?
There you go. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, that concludes our session today. Thank you very much. It's been a good substantive session. So we are adjourned.